Yeah, real quick before we get started, I just wanted to say a big thank you to Charlie and Tate for working on this for our town. We are not the easiest town to work with due to our situation, but we're moving forward and this is part of it. So again, thank you for your work on this.
Yeah, and Heidi, I'm sure your board knows this, the council knows it, that you've done a lot of good things for the town.
Oh, absolutely.
And you're in a tough spot. That's probably the biggest understatement of the year, so. But I think we'll go ahead and start looking at the reports if that's okay with you guys. It won't take up too much of your time. But the main thing before we get started is we pieced together the financial information as best we could. Since Heidi's been there, she's done a much better job of keeping track of revenues and getting checks deposited and pay bills on time. But we still don't have good fund balance information of what really should be in the wastewater fund and what should be in the water fund and the general fund of the town. So we've done the best we can. You guys know we're still working through that. Heidi's still working with the State Board of Accounts on trying to get that all cleaned up. So we put our reports together based on the best information we had. It's not perfect. And we want to come back and update this once we do get some good financial information, just to see where we're at. But I'll probably start with the water report if that's okay with you guys. That's what I would call the easier of the two. And hopefully you guys have a copy of it. I've got it up on the screen just in case we kind of step through it. I'll just skip to the letter. We've got a summary there. We really looked at 2023 and 24's year financial information. Then we had June 30th, 25th, and we annualized those financial statements. So we took the first six months and said if we continued second six months, here's where we would be at. Just so we had three years of comparison because we like to do that to see where the trends are. See if there's been any unusual revenues or big expenses that we need to take out that we won't have in the future. So that's kind of our process. We also got a note here. The good thing in the water utility is you've got a bond outstanding, but the last payment, you've got one year left. So once you get past that, that's really going to help your cash flow. And it's the main reason why we're not recommending a big increase in water because we know after that year when you pay that bond off, you're going to be a lot better off. Now, you probably have some capital improvements that are coming in the water utility. We haven't taken that into account. So when you get to that point, if we've got some things we've got to do in the water utility, may have to do another bond issue to pay for those depending on how much they are and what the timing is. So we'll go really start with page number one of the report, and that's the statement of receipts and disbursements. And you can see the revenue, very steady revenue, which is great. That's what we'd expect in the water utility. Customer receipts have gone up the last two years. People have used more water, which is good. And then the expense side, you can see 23 and 24 were pretty stable and 25, and that's an annualized amount. The expenses are lower, and that's really because of that equipment line. In 2024, we had to buy some equipment. 2023, we've got a line repaired down towards the bottom of that. So we've had some capital expenses, repairs and replacements in 23 and 24 that at least in the first six months of 25, we didn't have. And so that net operating receipt line, kind of three quarters of the way down, that kind of tells you how much net revenue you're making. So 23 and 24 is about $54,000 after we paid our operating expenses. And then we still have to pay our bond payments down here. And so for 23 and 24, at the end of the year, when we took into account all those expenses, we actually spent more than we brought in. So that's that bottom line down there. $48,000, spent more than revenues in 23. It was only about $8,000 in 24. And then if we ended up 25, the way we started 25, we actually bring in more revenue than we spend. But I'm sure we've had some expenses there, and Heidi probably could tell us what those are. But are there any questions on this historical information of revenue and expense in water?
I don't have any.
No. They're shaking their heads now.
Go ahead, Heidi.
They're just shaking their heads now.
Yeah, yeah. So then we'll go to the next page. And normally, this is how we reconcile the revenues and expenses. We look at our cash that we've got and then the change in cash because that should match our net receipts. We don't have that information. We really need to have it to have a good picture of the utility. We've got this minimum fund balance, so that's what we're saying in the operating fund. We should always have a minimum of about $50,000, and that's just for cash flow. We use three months of operating expenses for that number, so that's what we'd like to have there. And then the bonds would require a debt service reserve fund, fully funded at one year. I don't think we have that, but we should. And then we'll go ahead and keep going through this. The next page are our adjustments. So in the water utility, we're not making any adjustments to the operating receipts. We think those are going to continue on as they have been. But in the expenses, we do make some adjustments. So we know salaries are going to go up. We know insurance is going to go up. We've got a summary here on page four of what we put together. And these are really modest increases. And then we've got kind of an all leather inflation. We said everything else, let's just assume it goes up by 7%. We know most things are costing more than they did in the past, so we put that in there. And then we've got another adjustment in there for payment in lieu of tax. And so that's one thing we are suggesting, and most of our clients have that right now. But what you can do in a utility is you can make a payment to the town general fund as if the utility were paying property taxes. So that is to help the town and the general fund pay for some of those expenses. And that's going to be even more important with the Senate Bill One impact that you guys are going to see in the town's general fund. We're going to, and we can talk about that a little bit if you guys want to. But the other big impact from Senate Bill One is all of the current income taxes will go away. So your economic development income tax, your public safety income tax, and the old catch that goes in the general fund, you won't get any more of those revenues in '28 if things stay the way they are. So we know when we get to that point, we're going to need to really be careful with what you spend in the general fund because it's going to get tight. LaGrange County will have the power to create a new income tax for the small towns in LaGrange County. So if you're less than 3,500 population, which you guys are, you won't be able to do your own income tax. You'll be dependent on the county for that. So that's just something that's out there. One thing you can do to help is have this payment in lieu of tax. And then the last adjustment we have there is we're just saying we know you're going to have repairs and equipment costs that were not in 2025 at that point down, so we've added that back in. So any questions on any of those adjustments?
I don't have any.
Not here.
Okay, they're pretty straightforward. Like I said, we didn't really, we don't have a lot of adjustments here, but we do, we're trying to take into account where expenses are going to be next year at least when we look at the rate increase. So here's the bond issue that we were talking about, page five. This shows you what payments are left. We're almost done. January 1st to 27th will be the last payment. Normally, you would have a debt service reserve fund. That's what our note is on here. Normally, we would say, let's pay that off right now. Those bonds are callable. We can pay them off if we wanted to. But we really don't think we have the cash in the water utility to do that. So I think we're going to have to let that bond run and make the last payment in January 27. But it's nice to see a bond pay off.
Yeah.
So that was issued in 2025. It's basically 20-year bonds, so we'll be done with it. Next page here is our revenue requirement, and we've got, you can see for '25 and '26, we're not going to make, we're not going to bring in enough revenue to pay for our expenses. That's what that bottom line is. Increase needed 20%, 22%. But the good news is, once we get to '27, we get that bond paid off, we theoretically wouldn't need an increase. It's a negative amount there as we go out. But our recommendation on the water would be to go ahead and do a 12% increase at this time. It's just trying to keep up with inflation. I would say more than anything, we don't like to have those big increases. If you wait too long, that's what happens. That's what we're going to see in the wastewater. But in water, that's our recommendation. You can see that that's not absolutely critical. But again, we don't know what the cash balances are, so we can't be totally sure what the water utility financial condition is. So any questions? That's kind of the summary of water. We'll go back here to page eight just to give you an idea of what that means. So if a person uses 5,000 gallons, they should be paying about almost $57 a month. It would go up to almost $64, so that's a $7 a month increase at that 12% level for a residential homeowner.
Okay. Plus a modest increase with some of the blow of any future increase for a major capital project.
Right.
Yeah, that's a good point, Ben. So that would hopefully help us have a little bit of cash flow in there to pay for some of those smaller capital items. And if we did have a big project, that would probably need to be a bond issue. But this rate increase would help towards that all the way around. So any questions before we go into wastewater?
Can you?
Go ahead.
Can you explain how the payment in lieu of taxes works? You would pay out of the water operating into the general from?
Correct. That's exactly right, Heidi.
Okay. And in one of my trainings I had, they were talking about, I believe it's next year, we'll have to petition the counties for our rate. If we don't petition the counties, then they get to decide the rate. Do you know anything about that yet?
Yeah, and so that's a good point, Heidi. So that's the income tax, and that's what I was talking about. So in '26, we really want the council to ask LaGrange County, petition them, and just say, here's what we need of an income tax rate in order for us to maintain the revenues that we're getting right now. The rates don't actually expire until 2028, so we're expecting most county councils, and it's the council that's going to make the decision, the county council, to do that in 2027. So we can ask them next year. We can tell LaGrange County Council, here's what it looks like we need. And Chippewa, we work for them. We're doing the same thing there. But they don't have to give that to us. It'll be their decision. And it will be an income tax that they will levy on everybody in the county that's outside of a town or city above 3,500. Now, do you guys have anybody in the county that has 3,500 population? Tate, do you know them?
Probably only LaGrange.
I don't think LaGrange does. You guys know?
Probably.
I don't think so.
But still, remember the thing, it's like both counties, they're also a noble county. There's actually a thing.
It does, and that's one of the things that the legislature is not very clear about. And hopefully, there's going to be changes to this in the next session. So they're going to have to do that. So that's a point of, you're right. We would also want to petition the other county because you're going to need to get some income tax from them as well.
Right.
That's a complicated thing, and it's going to be hard for everybody to understand how that impacts income taxes and who pays what. But that's coming. Changes are going to happen, but you're right, we've got to stay on top of that. But as of now, we don't have that impacted until 2028. Now, what we're hearing from the legislature right now, the latest thing was that may get pushed back to 2030. So we'll keep it on the radar, but at this point, we've got a little bit of time to deal with that. But the key is, like you said, that the payment in lieu of taxes is an idea of trying to get some of the money from the utility over to the town general fund just to help with some of those other costs.
Okay, thank you.
And I think it's probably even more important here because you've got quite a few customers outside of the town limits, right?
Yes.
Only on sewer, not on water.
Okay. And so we've got the same adjustment in sewer, so we'd like to have them pay some of those costs because we know there are some costs that they're not paying property taxes to the town that they ought to help cover. So anything else?
Yes, when you do a rate study, like say for years, some places have an annual percentage increase to cover the cost of inflation. Do we do that?
We can do that.
Well, I think we need to, so we stay with it every year.
Dean, I like that a lot, and I think that's the way most people are going right now. And so we've got a lot of clients who are doing a 5% rate increase per year. You know, and we could do that for three years. Now, we'll have to ask Ben if he's okay with that. We've had some times where counselors said, we can do that for three years, but we're not going to let you do it for five years.
Well, whatever it is, you know.
Right. And then when it passes the ordinance, you rip the Band-Aid off and you don't have to touch it.
Well, we are going to have to look into that. We'll have some reservations. Do you mean from one ordinance, three years, where it spells out the rates each year?
That's what we like to do, Ben, is just have one rate ordinance that has those increases set up for the next three years or however long we can go. And we can support it with our analysis. You know, we won't call it an inflation rate increase. We'll just call it a rate increase, and we'll estimate our costs because they are going to go up. We know they're going up, so. And that may be a good way to handle the water especially, not do a 12%. And we don't, let's just phase that in basically as 5% a year for the next three years.
Well, regardless of how all this goes, we're going to need a lot of help with PR.
Yeah.
These people come unglued with a little bit of an increase, and I understand. So.
Yep. They're getting hit on all sides, you know.
Yes.
Electric costs are going up everywhere too, and that's a part of utilities as well.
Groceries, everything's going up. It's just a bad situation.
Speaking of going up, I wanted to make them aware of the tap fee increase that we were.
I'll go back to that, Heidi. That's a good point on that.
I think page seven.
Okay, page seven, yeah, at the bottom there.
Oh, here we go. Gotcha.
And so right now, when somebody connects to the water utility, we're charging them $182.50 as a tap fee. And that's the same charge no matter what the size of the meter is. What we are proposing here is to increase that for the 5 eighths and three quarters, which are your residential, to a $500 tap fee plus the actual cost of the meter and any installation cost that the town has for that. So we want to make sure that the town gets all of the expenses back that it costs the town to make that connection. And then normally, the bigger the meter size, the higher that tap fee is. And so what we've done is based on those different meter sizes, the equivalency factor, we've increased those proportionally for those bigger meter sizes. So that would be something new, and the rate ordinance would be one to increase the tap fee and then include it where it's more for those bigger sized meters. So any questions on that?
Are you charging for the costs? Why are we staggering the extra costs for the bigger sizes? And even having the initial charge, if you're already charging for the cost, how is that reasonable?
Well, so the cost is the cost of the meter and the installation. The other part, the $500 of the $182.50, that's what somebody's paying to buy into the system. So the system, we've already invested millions of dollars. We're paying the bond off. Those people aren't going to pay for that, but they are going to get the benefit of connecting to our system. So that tap fee is, in essence, their buy-in to get into the system. And we've got the same thing on the sewer side, on the connection charge, that it's a way of trying to make those people pay for all the things that have been done before they come into the online to be part of it.
Pay to play them, right?
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Try to make it fair. It's never fair. But, you know, they need to pay something to connect in and enjoy the benefit. And $500 is not, you know, it's a big percentage increase, but that, you know, compared to other places, that's not a big charge.
You know, that's going to be helpful with the PR part, is being able to compare it to other communities.
Yeah, and we'll get that to you. Yeah, that's always a big part of this is, you know, to be able to share with what everybody else is paying because every utility is facing the same situation.
Right. Yep, good.
So that's water. Anything else on water?
I guess at some point down the road, we're going to have to look at capital improvements. Like a lot of the water system needs a complete replacement. How does that play into all this? Is that another aspect of all this? This is just operational stuff?
So, yeah, how far along are you on that? Do you have an engineer that's looking at that, or kind of what's the timing, do you think, of the capital needs?
Well, they're needed now. When we discovered our financial situation, we realized we couldn't go anywhere. We looked at it. We've studied it a little bit. You know, we have three utilities, our stormwater, water and wastewater. The idea was to do the stormwater first because you can catch stuff as you're going along. But it's looking a lot more like water might be the way we go, but you have to have money in order to be able to get grants. So we need a creative way of being able to do that at some point.
And the key will be, we'll need an engineer to come up with those estimated costs because that's going to be the first thing of the grant application or even the SRF program. You'll have to have at least a preliminary engineering report that says
Yes.
what it is that you need and what the costs are.
Right.
And then the best thing is the SRF program. And everything is dependent, almost everything, on grants as far as what your monthly rate is going to be. So the SRF program has normally said, we try to keep that 4,000 gallon rate at about $75 per month. That's gone up, and now they're more like $90 a month for 4,000 gallons before you really see those grand dollars. So you're, you know, it feels like you're high on your monthly rates, but you're not compared to a lot of other places. But that, just to give you an idea of what they look at. But the good, you know, the good news on water, at least you do have that bond issue paying off that gives you that opportunity to do another bond. But it is going to take some higher rates, I'm sure, to do that.
Okay. Okay. Well, it sounds like a bridge we'll cross when we get to that one, not too far away.
Yeah, but that's good. That's very good to know, and we kind of expected that, you know, given where you were with the other bond. It's kind of almost happens every time when, you know, you pay one off, you get the next project that's going to have to happen because those things wear out, you know. And we hate to do, we see some people that'll do a 35 or a 40-year bond for something, and usually before you pay it off, you're having to replace it. So, you know, we don't like to do those, but sometimes that's a way to keep the rates lower.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
All right, let's go to wastewater. That's the tough one. So we'll kind of start with that one, and we'll go really skip to the letter. We just want to highlight that 85% is what we've got in here for a rate increase. We're really not recommending that. That's just, that's going to be too much for your ratepayers. We understand that. We want to, we'd like to phase those in, but let's talk about kind of the reason why it's so high. One reason is we haven't raised rates since 2016, so we've got a long time of expenses going up and revenues staying pretty much the same that's caught up with us. We've got a second thing here. We had a debt surcharge, an extra monthly charge on part of our customers that expired in 2025. That part of the bond issue, there were two bonds done. One does pay off this year, but the payments on the other bond go up. So we're not really enjoying that bond payment going down because our other bond, the payments go up. So that hurts us to lose that surcharge revenue. And then the final thing is just operating costs have gone up tremendously. And I think, we talked with Heidi a little bit about this. I think because of the other issues with the town's financial information, she probably has paid some more things out of sewer just because it had more money than maybe what should have been paid out of the general fund or the water utility. So that's kind of embedded in this. It's hard to break that out specifically, but that's probably part of this problem that we have. So then we'll go to page one, and this is kind of, well, the format's exactly the same as the water. So you can see where the revenues are. We do have more revenues coming in here in the wastewater, and part of that may be just how the revenues were recorded. But we do have a really good trend on income going up in the wastewater. And expenses, you can see 2024 is 815,000 of operating expenses. So part of that, we think, is, you know, some of those larger expenses, capital items that we had. But also, I think that's where Heidi had to pay some of these things and had to have a place to pay it. But '25, at least for the first six months, those expenses had kind of calmed down and were really more on the same level they were in '23. So when we get back further, you'll see we're basing our recommendations, our rate increase, on this annualized 2025 column. So we've tried to take out some of those bigger changes to normalize it. So really what we normally would have to pay. But you can see kind of here at the bottom, this net receipts, that's not pretty at all as far as paying more than what we're bringing in. And that's really what we're focusing in on that rate increase that we need. So any questions on revenues or expenses in wastewater?
No.
Okay, so we'll keep going through this. The cash balances, same thing. We don't have those. The utility, really, we ought to have over 200,000 in operating fund. We ought to have a debt service reserve fund that's fully funded, so that would be about 400,000. So we really should have a lot of cash in the wastewater utility. I don't think we have that level, and so part of what we need that rate increase for is just to build those cash balances up to where they should be and really where they're required to be in the bond ordinance for the sewer utility. So one thing that we talked with Ben about and Heidi is we're probably in violation of some of our covenants in our bond documents in wastewater. And we really need to get some rate increase done to get us back on track. So we've got the same kind of adjustments here. We do have a big one in the revenue side. We're saying 117,000 is what we believe we collect from those debt surcharges that are going to go away. We're saying a hundred and seventeen thousand is what we believe we collect from those debt surcharges that are gonna go away. So that's a, a, a negative impact here, and then we've got some operating adjustments, and those are real similar to what we had in water, we've, we've got a payroll increase, we've got, um, some insurance costs we think are gonna go up, we've got a payment in lieu of tax here again, um, and that's just putting that in, that's not saying you have to do that. And then with all the other costs in the wastewater, we assumed they would go up by seven percent as well. And then the, this bottom one in, we had a, the debt surcharge, there were twelve customers in the new town section, then two hundred and thirty-two customers in that phase one, that had been paying that, um, debt surcharge, that the rate ordinance, uh, right now says that those charges all went away as of September of twenty-five.
Okay.
So any questions on the adjustments in wastewater?
Nope.
Okay, we'll, we'll keep going, we, we have that same, um, projection here of what the revenue requirements would be, we've got eighty-five percent in there again. That's, would be the, you know, the, if we've said we've gotta, we're really gonna bite the bullet here and, and raise these as much as we have to, that's what we would do, we're, we understand that's not really, um, something that's positive that we'd wanna do, but that.
Did we lose ya?
I'm still here, Ben.
Yeah, we're, we're Charlie.
Yeah, we lost Charlie.
We're right in it too.
Did we lose our internet?
No.
We're good on internet?
Good on internet.
Does it say?
Yeah, we got Wi-Fi, that's Wi-Fi here, right? We're together, we've got hard.
I can hear you guys, it's fine.
Okay. Can't hear the other guy.
I can't, we can't hear Charlie.
Is he still showing on the video?
Can you hear Charlie, Ben?
I cannot.
Shows he's still there. Well, there's a full screen of Ben.
Yeah. What's it saying on the side there?
What's the spatial audio for? What's that button?
Uh, if he can hear us, it's not a problem on our end, it's a problem on their end.
Well, what is the spatial audio supposed to be hit?
I don't think so, because we didn't have it all, we didn't have the problem before. Okay, let me go. Um.
That's the best part, that's the best part of the communication.
Yeah.
I'll listen in the chat, see if he sees that.
Okay.
Okay. Might have to borrow your phone.
Yeah, the electronic stuff is really good until it's not. Most of the time we don't want. Where are you pulling your church at now? Uh, over to Topeka. Hey, Mr. Minister? Uh, Keith Perry. Who, Keith Perry?
Oh.
He does, uh, Topeka and Shishaw.
Yeah.
What?
Do I keep videoing?
Yeah, the meeting's still going. Very revealing to study those.
We did talk to your fish friends, six, six, uh, six, six over there.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
When she say seven hundred?
Didn't. Like, nothing. Oh, no, I was calling Sam. I was calling FSG. Hi, Sam. We lost audio, but Ben can hear us, so I think it's on FSG's end.
I, it most likely.
Sorry myself, um, see what happens while I.
Okay.
Um, hold on one second, let me, let me get signed in again, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Charlie's talking away, I know we can hear.
Let's see.
Can, can one of you guys say something?
Sam's on, you hear that, Sam?
Do you hear us?
Yeah, so I can see you.
Yeah.
Right.
Uh, is he muting right, is he muted right now?
Hey guys, Charlie said he had a power outage at his office location. He's trying to call the town, but the town's not big enough, you know?
It's, okay. He's trying to call, what, what's your number?
Uh, two-six-zero.
Okay, Ben, can you have him call two-six-zero?
Three-three-six.
Three-three-six.
Four-nine-five-three.
Four-nine-five-three.
Okay, Charlie, did you get that or are we muted?
Okay, Sam, thank you.
Yeah. Alright, he's, he's gonna call on that number.
Okay.
He's on, he's on, Charlie's in Plainville?
Yes. Alright, hello again. That is okay. Okay, one second here, I need to get you on speaker.
Is your phone charged up too?
It's Tiffany's in a box. Okay, um, okay, try, let me see if I can hear ya. Charlie?
Did you mute it?
Probably. Charlie?
Yes.
Okay, now we can hear you.
Alright, sorry about that, guys, we lost power in our office. Something, uh, but, somebody must hit a pole or something, man, with it, office and everything went dark, so.
You hear that, Ben?
Had nothing to do with the eighty-five percent increase, I don't think your ratepayers are down here yet.
So you can't hear the speakerphone? With him on the speakerphone, Ben?
I hear you loud and clear, I barely heard Charlie a couple words.
Charlie, say again, say something.
Ben, can you hear me?
Can't hear that?
I cannot, wow.
Is there a way to three-way him? Charlie?
Uh, I can't do it with where I.
Oh, you have no heart, and I have no idea how to do that, because.
Wow, that's strange that Ben can't hear him, but we can, but it's just the speakerphone.
Right.
Well, and we were pretty much down to the end, I think, um, so maybe we can wrap up, and then I can call Ben, or, uh, Heidi, if you wanna talk to Ben after we're done.
Okay.
If that's okay, just.
Alright, well, we're gonna continue on here, Ben, and we'll, uh, let me see if we can.
We'll relay it to him, yeah, he's seen our report, so I think we'll be in good shape.
Sound good?
Yeah, okay.
Really, we were, uh, I think we're on page six, so we were looking at the bonds, there's a, a, a bond of two thousand thirteen that's, that paid off in September of twenty-five. Which is great, but that's the bond that the debt surcharges were tied to, and that's why they go away, those surcharges. And then if you go to the next page, there was a bond issue done in twenty-sixteen, uh, that continues on, but it had small payments up until when those two thousand thirteen bonds paid off, so. You can see, we don't have the whole debt service schedule, uh, showing there on page seven, but, uh, it was a hundred and seventy-nine thousand that we're paying in twenty-five, and that goes up to three hundred thousand in twenty-six, so the, that bond was kind of wrapped around the payments on that other bond issue. Um, so that continues all the way out to twenty-thirty-six. So, uh, and let's just go to page eight, that kind of ties it, ties them together, so we have been paying about four hundred thousand a year. Uh, and that's gonna go down to three hundred thousand, which is good, uh, but we lose those debt surcharges. So that's, we, we still gotta account for those, uh, debt payments, and then, uh, the other thing with, with bond issues and, and debt payments is you normally have to have a debt service coverage amount, so that's, um, if we have a, a debt payment of a dollar, we need to have a dollar twenty-five or a hundred twenty-five percent of debt service coverage, so we'll, we'll, we'll see that when we take into account where the rates need to be, that we need to bring in more revenue than what the actual, uh, debt service payments are. But any, any questions on the outstanding debt of the wastewater?
I don't.
None.
Okay, so then we'll, um, we'll continue on, so then, uh, the next page is just what the, the rates would be, um, if we, uh, increased it by eighty-five percent. The one thing, or actually two, two things here, really three things, then kind of at the bottom is the debt service surcharge, so you can see the people in Newtown at phase one were paying about twenty-four dollars a month, and, and forty dollars a month, uh, for those debt surcharges, so people in those areas won't see as big of a rate increase, because they're seeing their rates go down, uh, because those fall off, and then we're gonna, uh, increase, uh, rates somewhat. Uh, so the, the people in those areas aren't gonna, uh, be as affected. And then the bottom thing there, and we talked about this, the TAPV and the water, uh, utility, uh, the connection charge right now on sewer is two thousand six ninety-two. Um, we'd like to raise them, I don't know if, uh, four thousand nine eighty is, is probably too high. Um, but maybe that should be three thousand dollars, so we'll, we'll look at what some of the other people in your area are charging. Uh, but we wanna point that out, that we'd like to, to increase that. Uh, and then the other, the other part to mention here, you see those rate blocks at the top? So the first two thousand gallons get discharged at a certain rate. And then it goes down, um, in, in sewer utilities, we really don't like to have that, those rate blocks where it's a big discount, um, as we go down, so one thing that we would like to think about is maybe eliminating those two blocks, so in, in water, it makes sense, because the cost of, to produce a thousand gallons of water, um, there's some efficiencies that if you buy a hundred thousand, it's not costing you the same amount to, to make that extra thousand, uh, gallons of water. On sewer, that doesn't hold true as much, because it's still costing you the same amount to treat wastewater if it's a thousand gallons or a hundred thousand, and the cost efficiencies aren't the same, so that's one thing, and, and Heidi, I don't think you have any big customers, do you, that use that much water per month?
Car wash?
Maybe, yeah, the car wash, we have one.
We'd wanna look at evidence in the future, I would say, and, you know, maybe we, we, we collapse those rate blocks on the, on the sewer utilities a little bit. Uh, just because we don't wanna give a, that big of a discount, that's, that's a big discount from the top to the bottom of what people are paying, that, that's probably not, um, not fair, but that's, that's what's in your rate ordinance right now, that present rate column is where we're starting, and then you've got that middle section there, Heidi, that you were talking about, you've got a fair amount of people who don't have water meters, um, they're paying a, a monthly metered rate, that's fifty dollars right now. Um, and we're saying that, if we did eighty-five percent, that would go up to ninety-two dollars, um, per month, so. Uh, any, any questions on that page? And I, I know those are big, uh, big numbers.
So you would recommend getting rid of all of the per gallon and just going with a standard rate of a certain amount, not depending on usage?
Not necess, so if we have, we'd like to have everybody have a meter, 'cause we, you know, the best case would be everybody pays for what they use, so that's not gonna happen, so we, we have to keep some of those metered rates. But what we'd like to do is collapse some of those discounts where it says if you use over a hundred thousand gallons per month, we'd like to get rid of that rate. We don't wanna give those big discounts for people who are using that much, um, water, because that, that, that discount is not really applicable in sewer like it would be in water. But we, for everybody else, if they have a meter, we wanna keep charging them for their usage.
So Charlie, uh, Ben has something he wants to offer, see if he can hear it.
Okay, yep, yep, go ahead.
Go ahead, Ben.
I, Heidi asked a question about eliminating the discount based on the volume, and if Charlie answered that, I didn't hear his response.
No, he did.
We won't eliminate it all the way, Ben, and I think that's probably what Ben was saying, he would, wouldn't wanna eliminate that totally, but maybe those last two.
Okay, hey, hey, yeah, basically, Ben is saying, we, we're not gonna eliminate, uh,
The rate block, we'll just collapse the, the bottom two.
We'll collapse the bottom two rates for the higher usage of, uh, uh, for sewage, uh, to, so they're not as higher rate, or as lower rate, uh, for the quantity.
Okay, will we get, uh, an updated schedule of those rates?
We will, Ben, yep, so once we decide, and I think the big question now is really, I don't think anybody wants to do the eighty-five percent, so if we can decide what we want to do, we'll update our report that shows, um, what we really want the rates to go up to. But we will, we'll definitely have a, a revised rate report.
Yeah.
For Ben to use for the, the rate ordinance.
Yeah, there'll be a revised ra- rate report, Ben.
Yep.
Got a thumbs up there, Charlie.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So then, uh, let's just go real quick through the last three pages of the, um, let's see, page ten.
Page ten?
That's the eighty-five percent, those are your customers in town, just to show you, um, what their rates would be, so that five thousand gallons, um, right now is about sixty dollars, that would go to a hundred and ten, um, for a fifty-dollar a month increase, so that, that's, um, that's a big increase, but let's go to, um, the next two pages, so people that are, uh, what we call Newtown, you can see their, um, the debt surcharge was higher, so they have been paid more than everybody else, so the, the new rates don't hit them as hard, and then the, the last page, um, are the phase one customers, and, and their debt surcharge was even greater. Um, so the rate increase for them is, is not really bad at all, uh, you know, their, their rates are gonna go down, um, for people using three thousand gallons or less, they would actually see a, a rate decrease because of that surcharge coming off, so.
Um, so, I, I guess I, I'm a little gray, what's, what, what is, can you define what Newtown in phase one is?
Yeah, and maybe Heidi, if, if, if we have a map, that what we did, uh, when the town bid the two thousand thirteen bond, they extended service to certain areas, and those areas I think were, are what we're calling phase one in Newtown. And so they said, all those customers in that area, you're gonna have to pay a debt surcharge to pay those bonds off. And, and so that's the, the way that's been set up, and, um, there are only like twelve customers, I think, in Newtown, but there are two hundred and thirty-two customers in phase one, so that, that's a much bigger area.
These are the back A and Bs that we're talking about.
Didn't we decide the twelve customers were the ones without water?
Here in town?
In town.
Yes, they're on a well.
They're on a well. I believe Newtown is the, the customers that are on a well.
We serve a sewer to them.
Sewer, but no water.
But no water, they're still on a well, they were, somehow they still have a well.
Alright, so Newtown's no, no, no water, and the other ones, phase one?
In our town limits, yep.
And, uh, the phase one is still in town, we're not even talking about around the lakes.
It's on what we call our back A system.
Okay, alright, okay.
That's how we define it, Ralphie and I.
Okay, that's how I've always heard it, so these are new.
Okay.
Okay.
Back B was the phase two where they went down in twenty twenty.
Okay.
They went from one hundred dollars and seventy cents to fifty-ten.
That was what initiated the whole rate study to begin with, uh, trying to do that back then. Some of those rates have to go up too then, I would think. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. That's what I, I was looking for, just a definition.
Yep. So I think we're probably all, um, in agreement that eighty-five percent is too high. But I think we know we've gotta do something. Um, and so what we had talked to Heidi about was, uh, let's do a phase in. Let's do whatever we can, we think we can sell with PRs, if that's forty percent or, you know, you know, whatever you guys are comfortable with, because we've gotta get this started. Um, and then we can come back and update this when we get better information on the financials. And, you know, maybe that helps us, um, not have to do the full eighty-five percent, um, down the road. Uh, but that's really up to council what you guys, um, wanna move forward with. But we've gotta, we've gotta do something.
Yep. Okay.
And depending on how, you know, if you say, let's do forty percent and then another ten percent the next two years, we can run that and get that new report to you. But you guys tell us kinda what you wanna look at and, and we can come back with that.
Okay. That will work, I hope. All right, so we have.
So are you asking them right now to decide upon a rate that they're comfortable with and vote on that?
That, what, yeah, I, we want some direction from them of what they wanna see in the next report. So if that's, you wanna look at forty and then a ten and a ten, we can do that. If you wanna do something else, we can do that. But that's, that's what we need is the direction to, to keep this moving to the next step.
Well, I think we gotta consider if people have to budget for this stuff, so.
Yes, that's a good point, too.
I, I think the phase approach is a way to go. My personal feeling, not what everybody else thinks, but. Were you forty, ten and tens? That, that makes more sense than eighty-five, yeah.
Yes, yep, we agree with that, yep.
Heidi?
And you've gotta, you've gotta get your cash balances built. I'm afraid, you know, when we get, get that all reconciled, we're not gonna have much money in the bank. You know, we're gonna, if we don't get this going quick, um, we're, we're just digging a, a bigger hole, so.
Right.
And you're going with the forty starting out because that is the rate that you see that would help us more as opposed to like a thirty, twenty, twenty, where it wouldn't come, come across?
Yeah, and I, I, I just think we're so far down in the hole. We've gotta have that, the first phase of this needs to be forty percent.
Yeah.
Right.
Just to get us back on top, uh, or get us, try to get us back to even. And then, you know, we'll, we'll look at it. Uh, hopefully the books will get done and then maybe we don't have to do both in the tens, uh, you know, if, 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 if we're lucky. But, um, you know, we, it, it's hard to do eighty-five because it's a big shock. And also because we just don't have all the information. So it, it's hard to, to say we need the eighty-five when we can't show what those cash balances are. So, but that's part of it, too.
We gotta bring Ben up to speed on this.
Yeah, and we, I'll, I'll call Ben after this and tell him what we did and also, you know, let him know we'll, we'll get a new report out that's got all of the numbers in it.
Okay, did you catch that, Ben?
I cut a little bit of it.
Okay, Charlie's gonna.
Stagger his recommendations. This is what we recommend, number one, but if we can't, we'll take a moderate, moderate, stagger approach.
Yeah, that's basically what we're talking about.
That's it.
And he's gonna call you after this and discuss all that with you to bring you up to speed. Does that work? Got two thumbs up there, Charlie.
Awesome, awesome. That sounds good. Well, uh, I think we know what we need to do. Are there any other questions or anything else we need to discuss?
Uh, not at this point, for me. I guess covered everything. We'll have to be discussing more, I'm sure. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, okay. This is a good first step and, uh, we'll get this back out to you. Um, I'm sure Ben will come up with a timeline of, um, the steps that we'll need to have council pick to get everything approved.
Okay.
I just have.
That's what he's gonna talk to you, he's gonna talk to you about that.
Yep.
And that's why you then, you could recommend, uh, timetables for getting all the different paperwork things done.
Yep.
Go ahead, Heidi.
I just had a question. Um, when we do have the public hearing and present this to the public, is it possible to get one of you here in person to explain it a little more articulately than we could?
Yes, we can work, we can do that. We'll just, uh, we'll work with Ben on the day to just make sure when we said that, that that works for us.
Okay, so that's, we're probably not looking at that until the beginning of twenty twenty-six, perhaps?
I think that's, it'll take that long, yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Great.
All right, that sounds good. Well, you guys have a good rest of the day and apologize again for the power going out. Never know anymore.
Not your fault. Thank you. God works a mysterious way.
There's always a backup, right? There's always another way.
Well, thank you very much, Charlie and Ben.
All right, thank you. Yeah, we'll see you guys.
All right, take care.
Meeting over? No?
Mm-mm.
Nope.
No.
Push record again.
Oh, hold on, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, so we continue with our meeting, then.
Right, um, I just have two more things I wanna go over real quickly. In between our last meeting and this meeting, I met with Dan Hilton on the insurance for the employees. And I came close. Um, the rates are actually going up fourteen point eight percent on our health insurance to continue with the, um, with what we have. He gave us three, more than three different quotes, but three different com- three different companies that offer insurance. PHP is what we currently have, um, and that is at the top. And the cost, actually, our cost has been higher than that due to added employees. Uh, the, I highlighted in the orange and the yellow. The yellow is the renewal of our current. And if you look at the third column over the difference for the two thousand dollar a month, puts the out-of-pocket max on the employees of six thousand for individual or twelve thousand per family. Or if we stay with what we have, that, um, out-of-pocket max is fifteen hundred and three thousand. So there's a big difference there. Uh, Anthem is lower with those higher deductibles and higher out-of-pocket maxes. So I took them off the board. Ultimately, it's up to you gentlemen to decide. We did talk about United Healthcare. Uh, their costs were similar. Their out-of-pocket maxes were a little higher. The problem that he stated with United Healthcare is you have to be very careful using that insurance. Sometimes there's a provider within a provider. So when you get in, in there, say you have to go to the hospital and now they diagnose you with a heart problem. If your, your doctor's the provider, the heart doctor might not be. So there is the issue with that. Um, I would like to stay with our current. And if you want more time to look at this, the packet, I can get you copies of this. Uh, he was looking at wanting to get the renewal going for next year. So I don't know if we wanna table this. I, we do have till the twelfth, but he said the sooner the better on getting the renewal going. Um, we can't offer our employees a lot in the amount of raises. So I do believe we should keep the best benefit we can keep for them at the time, which is this, the one that we have.
That's the highlighted yellow?
And, yep, the insurance did go up the fourteen eight percent. However, our, we got the renewal. This is just health insurance through PHP. We did get the renewal on the best life, which is, uh, dental vision, short-term disability in life. And that has a zero percent renewal. So that will help us on that. So I don't know if we wanted to vote.
I think we should take care of it now. Yes, we do. And I think that the lower out-of-pocket is important. It's very important. And there's a motion to, uh, I believe we stay with our current insurance of PHP.
I'll sign a motion.
And then for others, questions and discussion, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I will let Dan know. And then the other thing, Ben has sent me the salary ordinance to start working. So Dean and I discussed, we had talked about the two percent across the board. Um, but this is what that would be per person. However, there, if you look at it, is two employees with the part-time that I would like to go slightly higher on. And then for myself, doing the longevity in lieu of the raise. So therefore, it's the one time.
Okay.
Um, so I wanted to give you this so I could get working on the amounts and get those to Ben. So we can have those for, to go into effect in January.
So the part times are down below here?
Correct. And they, they have the amount and what they would be and.
Okay.
So I don't know if you.
Do you think these are legitimate? It looks like to me. But I'll refer to others' opinions.
I don't like percentages. I like equal, equality. One guy gets fifty cents, everybody gets fifty cents.
Yeah, it's easier to, to work.
Well, you can do that.
But what?
You can, you can, I'm saying you can do that. It's, it's up to you. This is what we just went at, at the, the two percent for this year. Um, so you can do across the board.
Well, it would've been nice to see what the current one was, 'cause I can't do that in my head.
I can, can you go on my desk? The paste ups are there.
Okay.
I know Tiffany and I would rather not say on camera, so I can show you.
Okay.
I mean, this is public knowledge. It is on Gateway.
Are we gonna vote on, try and vote on this today or are we gonna?
Uh, this would be, this is just like a template for me to go by.
Okay.
Or, okay.
Okay, it's right here, normal notebook. That is their rates on everyone right in the book.
That's, that's, uh.
And then here's the name.
Right, okay, so Jerry would go to twenty-one forty-nine? Oh, I see what, oh, okay, so that's good, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, wow, okay. I wonder what the numbers would look like if you take like the forty-two cent one and raise that to fifty cents, just round them up.
Well, then it would just be here. It would be fifty-seven.
Okay. Okay.
Which would probably actually almost even out into, because some would be lower, that some would be higher.
Well, all these would go up. From five, five, six or higher, you go up. I don't know where you go down.
Well, but what Dean was saying is he likes to see it across the board. So they're all, they're all the same.
Yeah.
So if you were going with the fifty, then that would lower some.
Right.
Not what they're making currently.
I know what you mean.
But this is just for us to decide, so I can get the numbers to Ben so that he can finish preparing the salary ordinance and we can have that ready to go.
No, I think this is probably fine right now. It's, like, one's easier to comprehend, the other one's what we want to give everybody, so. I mean, that's just a personal preference of the, uh, showing dollars as opposed to percentages. So. Now, what about the ones that had requested more?
That was just because they are at a lower rate already to begin with. They get a lower percentage and it just wanted to try and keep up, because this is not going to even probably touch the cost of living, the insurance, their insurance is gonna increase with the percentage going up. So I mean, one has not, has started and started at that rate and not had a raise. The other one is the glue that holds the place together.
Right, yeah, those are pretty important ones there. Well, I would like to see the, uh, glue that holds things together go to that amount personally. Increase that.
What did you decide?
Well, we're still working on it. But we, we discussed, uh, the difference between rounding to cents and using percentages. And I figured, I just thought we'd just use percentages for now. And we're at the point now where, uh, this one here, I'd like to see that one. I would recommend going to that.
Yeah.
And, uh, so otherwise, I think it's pretty good. Uh, also, the one I would like to go, um, that hasn't had one, the second one, that, uh.
Oh, and the third one, I believe last year, because with the alliance training, the sewer training, he's received raises and I don't, and he's, will be due for another one.
Yeah.
So I think we leave that out because his would be higher than the percent that we would give.
Okay, so those, those two changes I, I would recommend. And then I'll leave the other one that we're just talking about static as it is.
Okay.
What do you guys think?
It's okay.
All right, and you're okay with the, like, the reasons in the past of not having mine be higher because you can never go lower and just doing the one-time longevity?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
And that was just figured the same as everyone else's, the two percent?
Yeah.
Which I actually feel guilty about.
You want to say it back, Anne?
Um, that's up to you, yeah.
I think I'll keep it.
And then that is all I have.
Okay, that's very good. Lot of work in this. Thank you very much. It was good work.
I have an additional item also whenever you guys are ready.
Go ahead.
Uh, it's mostly for Heidi and Dean. I sent Heidi an email last week about a conflict of interest disclosure statement that she need to have Dean sign for it to be uploaded to the Gateway website. I was looking for a status report.
That, um, yes, I need to finish reading the emails before I do it. It, it's been uploaded a couple different times now. So, and Dean signed that Monday, I believe, and it was uploaded yesterday.
That's awesome. Glad to hear it.
And, yeah, I have that to go back to you.
Of this signed, everything, because we need.
Of this signed, everything, because we need to email it back as well to stateboard accounts. And you, did you make that correction on the date for the contract?
I did.
Awesome, great, thank you. I'll look forward for the email, I'm gonna hang up now, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Take care. Now you shut that off.
Meeting's adjourned.